I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have two proveries.
Yes, I second it.
Hey, you remember how long it took you and I each other? Three minutes. Three minutes.
Public hearing, your half acre stamp. Will we open up a public hearing?
Not yet. So first you'd have, I assume you have a little presentation or description of what you want to do. So the applicant speaks first.
Okay.
So you can describe what you're doing.
I do feel like I'm a little better prepared than I was last month, so maybe this is a good thing. So the reason for the petition is to receive an exemption on the half acre building lot requirement for the city of Bay Salt. Kathy currently owns actually two several parcels of land here in the city of Bay Salt. The one that she is currently living on, where her home exists right now, is .314 of an acre. And the lot that is across the canal from her is .439 of an acre. So it's really close to that half acre minimum. Logistically, they've always treated it as two separate pieces of land. They've never done anything with the lot that's across the canal. It's always been used just for storage of trash or cars or, I mean, we used it one year for a garden spot and it was too difficult to keep it going, so. So it's always been treated by the family as two separate pieces of land. We've never really done anything with it. The home that she is in right now is a single white trailer that's been there for 42 years. It's sorely in need of repair and a little replacement. And the hope is that if we can sell this property, that that can help her financially to be able to do something. Finances are very tight for them in their home. And we're just really hoping that if we can sell this land, that we could help keep things going for her a little bit longer. She really wants to stay in Bay Salt. She loves it here and she doesn't want to have to leave the area. And so we actually were asking for an ex, I don't know if I'd call it an exemption, but we wanted an exemption on the one piece of land to sell. But then we also want to make sure that she will be able to replace her home sometime within the next five years if we do get rid of that parcel of land. We don't want to put her in a position where legally she won't be able to replace her home at all. She's getting to a stage in life where it's very difficult for her to care for the little piece where her house is on its own. She's not capable physically of taking care of the land that's on the other side of the canal anyways. So yeah, that's basically, in a nutshell, we're just trying to request, if at all possible, if the council would be willing to let us sell that piece of land and have it be already established that whoever may purchase that piece of land would be able to put a home there. But then also to ensure that she would be able to replace her existing home if we do sell that other piece of land. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
No questions, then you move it into public hearing. And, y'all, anybody? Nope. Question, so it's actually on the deed as two separate properties already?
It's two parcels.
Already?
But legally it is one. Well.
Deed is one for minimum lot size.
Yes.
So even though it's two separate, on the deed, two separate deeds already?
No.
No, it's one deed. Okay, then, okay, that wasn't said else as a one deed or two deeds?
I have to go to the courthouse.
So do you pay two property taxes or one property tax?
One.
So they haven't combined? As well as one deed then? So there's one deed.
Okay, one deed, but they are two separate parcels of land.
Because of the canal that we're talking about.
Yeah.
So the canal actually has a right of way through the parcel. That makes a difference, isn't it? They were two separate deeds and a lot that's already, that sense it's one, still one deed.
Yeah, this is our first step and the next step is to get it divided in the county.
Well, as a citizen, I see no problem since it's divided by the canal already. And I have any problem with it as a citizen here. So then if there's no more comments, then you move it back out of public hearing.
Do we have to have an actual motion made for a motion?
Yeah, I figure you must put it that way. Normally in the minutes they do it as a motion, but it pains me to think it's moving it out. So as a council of them, to grant a variance, you need to have some reason for it, right? So the canal dividing the property is obviously a pretty good reason for it. Because you don't want to have to learn so that everybody marches in and wants a variance, you know. So you need, you want something substantial to say, this is why we're doing it. Like say the canal's the perfect example, why don't you have it on the map? It doesn't make sense, but that's a few minutes.
If it was still just, if it was, the canal was not separating that, I wouldn't sell it.
Sure, yep, and that's the point, is that's the reason that it makes sense.
It's too hard for me to take care of those pieces.
And as a council, they need to have a reason to grant a variance, and that's the reason. And that's the debate for you guys.
So they're there.
So yeah, unless you have questions or if you feel comfortable, somebody needs to make a motion to grant the variance to a lot of hers, put them in two parcels.
Okay, and make a motion to grant a variance to just put the two parcels.
And lower the lot size, move those two parcels.
And lower the lots.
Sent to the.
I'm sure, and sure as I. So grant variance to divide.
To total out the division to two parcels and lower the lot size.
Should we save a grandfathered in for that smaller piece since it's already a house there? Everybody wants to save it.
I just, I would just lower the lot size for both parcels. You don't want to get any grandfather rights since she's those are all this small.
No, I didn't say that.
All in favor? I had thought that, but I.
So just procedurally, finding those own decisions have to be written, the county's going to want that anyway. So for their next month meeting, I'll put their findings together and have a reasoned statement of why they're doing what they're doing. So I will put that together for them to vote on next month. Obviously you're welcome to be here, you don't have to be, because then that will have your written decision that you can take to the county.
Okay. And with that, then what we could pass on to where we may purchase that?
Well, so the county will split it into two parcels and they may need to have you sign a deed. So you would deed one deed, so you're deeding it to yourself, but then they'll, that gives them the other two marquee numbers. Then you'll need this decision from the city council saying that they agree with that decision. So after next month's meeting, you have a written decision approved.
That's what I wanted to, especially for my houses now, is because I don't want to move my house out and not be able to.
Exactly, yeah, so we'll, and we'll put that on a written decision. But they have to do a reasoned statement.
Okay.
So you're not quite done.
Yeah, but first of all.
So make sure that's on the agenda for, so approval of findings on Kathy Nelson variance.
She's not here yet. It's supposed to be a stirrer.
Well, if you guys don't need us anymore, it's okay. We'll sit down. Thank you for your time and then you can talk about me behind my desk.
Actually, while we're in the way of the auditor, I might try and bug out of here too, so we got untamed things I need to do, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me hit you.
And we're happy to stay too, if you need to, but if it's just the audit presentation.
Emotional support, Karen.
There's always those untamed things to do when the sun goes down, it gets tight this time of year.
Especially where it's getting dapper sooner. Every day I'm like, oh.
The mornings, I always have my hour and a half to do in the mornings and the night, and it just gets tighter and tighter for a while. Well, I'll bug out of here now.
Have a good night.
And I'll put those findings together, you're supposed to know the idea, so.
Thank you.
Makes sense on that part, really. Well, move it out of here, bye.
Bye.
See you, see you.
Anything you want to say?
Nope, just happy to be here. Emotional support. Now that Karen's gone, I'll sit up.
Okay. Oh, bother for that. Now that you got it, this is last two years worth of stuff which apparently you haven't heard of. Oh, okay.
I was thinking something about showing those doing the spotlight down on man or still light or something. And the chickens at the backyard or something. Now they walked, they walked, and I heard you guys, and the dog, and it ran through, and it ran through the fields. And then they were trying to find it. Oh, that's weird, so I'm sure they were spotlighting, you know, but no, but it was like picking numbers. So I'm sure that's what it was. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, that's like, you know, because they weren't in.
Is there any more strong statements?
Yes. You're probably ready for the end of the day.
Obviously.
Hey, I was thinking just a moment, I had, and so I can't. This is just our page cap. Let's just get it over with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, give us this, the opinion once again, so. It's really a matter of right, we're done. So one of the interesting things, this is not anything that you care about really, but in page three. So the pension plan the state has per se has been in a deficit position as most pension plans tend to be. But that fluctuates, obviously, how much based on the market values. And remember that they're a year behind. So we're looking back at six thirty twenty-one for how the market values were doing. And they were actually, a minute, like a millisecond, they were overfunded. So you guys, everybody's financial statements this year, of this year, showed a net pension asset. So you actually, usually it's down there in liabilities and net pension liability for what's owed. But this year it flipped and it's up there for just a second. It'll be right back down in liabilities next year, but, so. I just pointed that out because I think it's kind of fun that they, they made it. Nothing huge on that first set of financials, those are number, your government wide, so they just have the capital assets and your debt and some of the stuff that you don't usually see on a daily basis, because you just worry about what I paid, not necessarily what I still owe in the future. And then, so a quick look over to page five, of course, this is where your normal financial statements come and they should look pretty similar to what you're used to seeing. No big surprises in assets and out owed. Unavailable revenues is again the property taxes that are not collected within sixty days from year end. So if you look at the net between that unavailable revenue number and your property tax owed number, it looks like you've collected about twenty-four-ish dollars within the sixty day window after year and then the rest of it, you just hadn't collected yet, so you stay down there. So all in all, your unassigned fund balance is positive two hundred and ninety thousand, which is most of what you have, so you don't really assign much of it and it's a, it's a pretty good position to be in. And most of that is in cash, so you've got a lot of ability to move, I guess, with, we've been around the city of Bay Salt, obviously. And then a quick look over to your revenues and expenses, which is page seven. I sometimes wish I could have these comparative so you can kind of see this year, the last year, but pretty much it's similar to last year. Overall, your revenues and over expenditures is twenty-five thousand, so you've increased your fund balance this year, which is always a good thing. Obviously, there's a limit, you don't want to increase to millions, people wouldn't like that, but within a certain extent, you do want to see that as a positive number unless you've planned for something big, but it's a good idea. No big surprises when we were auditing, no issues came up or anything that we were concerned about. Now on your proprietary funds, which is the next two pages, we've got nine in, your assets and then your revenues. And again, you can see your changes in net position, which is the bottom of page ten. We've got a negative in your water fund, but only a little bit, and then your sewer fund increased. So that's always the net position at year end, is very strong in your sewer funds and still pretty strong in your water fund as well. Yeah, I mean, if you consider, you know, a major repair, that's what you kind of want to aim for, for your fund balance. If you had to cut a check today for a major repair, how much would that be? And then in terms of how much do you have that you could, you could cut that check, so that's, that's a good. Yeah, I mean, we have just a small water district that only serves like a hundred and twenty people, I think it is, but. And there, I think we aimed for about six hundred thousand, because both of our pumps went out, you know, if you had to just do some major repairs, you'd eat into that pretty quick, so yeah. But Alamo, it's not a bad position, you aren't by any means, you know, getting close to getting in a scary position or that one, so. And then obviously, when you look at your cash flow, so the other one is an approval basis, so we're taking into account, you know, things people owe us, things that are owed, you know, other way around. And so this cash basis just goes back and says, okay, but if we look at how much you actually took in, how much you actually paid out, this is what it would look like. And if we go down to about three quarters of the way down, net increase in cash and cash equivalents. So both of them are positive, which is good. Again, you want to look for those to be positive unless there's some reason for them to be negative. If you had a big expense or you were investing in something big this year, you know, to help you into the future, those would be times when I'd expect it to go negative. So a positive is a really good thing. I'm going to interrupt if you have any questions, but it's all pretty straightforward, you guys know what you do. There's no significant changes in your note disclosures. There were two standards implemented during this year, but my group have impacted you. They would have impacted you if you had, like, if you guys were managing a water or sewer district separate from the city or if you have an urban renewal district separate from the city, then you might have been impacted by those things, because then we take a look at responsibility and do we need to present more than we were presenting before? But you guys don't have to worry about that. And then upcoming in this next year, you're going to see some information on lease changes. So they have, Gatsby has said, you know, there's a couple of things that are missing from your balance sheet. They said if you have an operating lease, that's usually always just pretty much a new work. But some cities, really not any here in Idaho, but some cities have really significant leases and that can be millions of dollars of liability that they've signed up for over the coming years. That's not presented at all because it's an operating lease. So Gatsby changed their standard, changed the definition of what they consider to be a lease, that needs to be put on your balance sheet and the calculation of how much needs to be put on your balance sheet. It can get a little bit complex, but it probably won't affect you guys unless you decide to lease some big equipment or do anything with that long term, so we'll keep that in mind for future in case we care. But no other changes in your note disclosures, no subsequent events, no anything crazy in your note disclosures. So I'll let you take just a second to scan through those and see if you have any questions. The big ones most people care about are going to be your changes in long-term debt, which is six and seven. Just letting you know if you have any other questions on any of them. And going back to that question on the water fund and how much debt you have in there, looking at that fund balance, and you have about two hundred and fifty thousand there, that would cover what, four years worth of payments? So that's another good indicator of how far forward can we, can we look. Page thirty, just really quick. This is your running to actual, this is only what you, your general fund, because it only lets the governmental funds, we don't have to do it for the proprietaries. But for your governmental fund, your general fund, you can just see the variable, variance, whether it's favorable or unfavorable. And really, the only one that was unfavorable is your miscellaneous expense, which was just way higher than you budgeted for, but overall, very, very favorable, imperative to what you thought. You thought you were going to spend into your fund balance by about thirty-six thousand and ended up actually padding, so that's a positive thing. And then our last report, the last two pages, thirty-two and thirty-three. And this is, we did look at your internal controls, we looked to see if there's anything just glaringly wrong or scary. And if there is, we reported to you and let you know, just so that we could think and fix, to make sure everything was on the up and up. And when we did that analysis, we didn't find anything that was glaringly obvious or glaringly wrong that we could see, so. It's not an opinion, but we did nothing to find, I guess is the best way to put it. That's about it, any questions? One thing I will bring up, Judy retired, we all knew that. The new partner on all of Judy's jobs, her name is Kim Dare, and she's been a partner with Witley for ever. She was with Josephine, which is another company from down in Utah before that, and she's been doing governmental audits forever. She is the head of the governmental service line with Witley, so she's pretty high up and it's really fun working with her. We don't anticipate any changes in the way that you guys see it, but you will see her name on the engagement letter she's going forward and you'll see her name in some of the communications and things like that, so we just wanted to introduce her. And then another thing to let you know is fees, costs for accountants have been going up. It's now, just because everyone can work from home, California, New York, all those big cities are looking at Idaho and going, hey, cheap labor. So they've been reaching out and grabbing up pretty much everybody that lives in the area. So we had to raise our rates so that we can keep our talents with us instead of throwing away. What that means for most of our clients is that you will see some fee increases. I'm not offended at all if you want to go up to bid and see if you can find someone else, but of course, I would love to continue working with you. And we'll send you kind of the engagement letter for this coming year pretty soon, so we'll be able to see that and then you can decide what you want to do, but I just wanted to let you know so you don't get too surprised when you go away, what. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right. Anything else I can do through this thing?
Is it newer people?
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, I still do it, I really like working in the office. And they gave me Judy's office, so I can.
Nice.
Yeah, so I go back.
Through for doing the repair?
That usually, you don't know through, so.
Oh, I can approve it. Approve the budget?
The final audit, or audit budget. So now she's going to go through it, all right?
Yep. That's fly, that's blue.
All in favor?
The parent's free.
You're good? Are you in favor? Are you in favor too?
I'm always in favor.
Anything else that you know?
That's what I know. Oh, the sewage test is going to be happening, all guy has to do is build a platform for.
You guys agree with that?
No.
Go home, take the load off.
Thank you so much, thank you guys. It will be done, that helped me and told me to, amen.
What happens? You know what's going on down, of course you know.
I don't, I was actually in Mesquite.
I was in Mesquite, not fully in the sky.
Somebody said they were doing something with the gas, that's what I thought. So nice meeting you, but.
On what?
Thirteen of thirteen.
Before you end, last month, when Laura wasn't here, you talked a little bit about a grant person. And, you know, Laura already mentioned sometime in the past that you had a friend who was doing that stuff and all to share whether the minerals are sure or not, you should be doing it or whether we should go up to your friend.
I texted her to get to see what she's got going on. I know another dude who doesn't grant or any of that, how good he is, if I can ask him to.
And then the question he was asked was, how much would she charge?
I don't know, you have to ask her. I did ask her if she'd do it and she said she would look around, so I don't know what that meant, so I'll text her again.
I did ask her if she'd do it and she said she would look around, so I don't know what that meant, so I texted her again. Because if all else fails, I could put it out to the list room and see if there's any real answers that, or at the universities that are going to do it. That's called, I know I don't want to. I will find someone else.
That's even smarter.
Yes. It's really a lot of work. Okay, are we done? I motion to adjourn?
Okay.